Submission, all of the submission, all of our few presentation law officials from ministry. And today, by you may, I mean one continuation, when I wonder where you may been leaving behind is today. And by you may firstly, by you may give him time, the table honorable members, slowly continue them all question. Me remind them you mean no more questions must be direct and precise. And also all responses only also must be precise and you may keep him short. You may cause us too much time, you may me understand say you got all programs later on this afternoon. So by the day you may try long go through, plan the law questions and me remind me packing all questions must be precise. And also responses to probably must be precise. Thank you to mass, so now I am bye. Me give him time, law honorable members, table, ask him any questions while he cut, ask him the team will stop today the morning. Thank you, you may give him a time, law honorable member belong Santo Royal Honorable Franklin Esra.
Good morning Chair, good morning honorable members and good morning Tichi. Director to them all members from ministry, we may just report to the morning again, the continue law all discussions for you me. Me got one question, ask him. By target, target was equal, whoever responsible. Me about all, all port of calls for you me, according to report, we learn to them. Like I'm a question where me will a one MSAV committee, one MSAV, Hamas port of call, you may cut the country here. And secondly, Hamas reactivate and Hamas in a work. Suppose Hamas doing a work, you may catch some plans, instead of in place, for you me reactivate them again or one of now me, me plan for you me. I think my first question, chair, me, me ask him the morning end, then by me continue the discussion. Thank you to mass.
Thank you, honorable member, Santo Royal, me give him time, law acting Tichi.
Thank you Chairman, Honorable MP, thank you, good morning Louis, good morning law honorable members, law esteemed distinguished committee, law house here. Thank you, law privilege, more honourable, savvy appear again, law for it, law committee. We, we've learned note them instructions for you, Chairman, law responses only specific, law questions where they ask and again. Law behalf, the team, me give any apology, law any inconvenience, so he cost law proceedings, say, is have taken place smoothly. And me direct them response, the question, honorable member, call law director, law department, law tourism, Mr. Paul Pio, law respond them. Thank you, sir.
Ports of entries here, he cut only four were actually active, only because they make out active presence, law authorities, for making clearance for all ships. This includes Tana, what them, Port Villa, Santo, Manu, Tukatanda, law, Vanu Lava, law Sola. So, and me I have a key, me me too, some law indications, we need, for me, making decentralization, law government, was have encourage more cruise calls, and make all outer islands, for make sure to say, cut all border clearances, for you me, list up on time, for encourage more cruise calls, he come law, geta. The 2024, I think, by you like note them, the report, for you me, me spend them a lot of money on the cruise program. But, for me, I'm including Port Villa, most Santo, but revampen back Santo, then want Santo Tourism Infrastructure Upgrade, the terminal itself. End of last year, you may make him opening, for him, Luganville. And then, Port Villa, me will also make him some work, whatever, not a tourism office, for upgrade them, facelift, or by me, tell them, say, first impression, law cruise terminal, for you me, law Port Villa. Law, on Navala calls, me will I been, please select them six ports of call, based on subject, availability of funds and budgets. Law 2025, you may start them, for make them work, finish, establish, Ansanvari, La Maivo, Lo Ranon, Lo Ambrem, Lo Maskeen, Lo Malakula, what them, Lo Sato Espeito, Lo Malakula. But then, you may to start the group, law site, law Epi. And me, me, some law work, and me will I been start making, finish, ego. As of ongoing, me will I also open them, the Ure Parapara, the municipal, June, July, and then you may to cut law, law Torres. On Navala ports of call, when me will I start, look, look, lemna ya, and me, for revive them back, back again, all yacht clubs, he got one, the port resolutions. And then, Lo Ansanvari, was, I mean, been mentioning, but he got Lo Wala, what them, Lo Maskeen, but then, Lo Port Oldri. And me, I know, him, all six, oh, sorry, what them, Lo Pangim, or London, Lo Pentecost. And me, I know, him, all six for the ports of call, so me will I been selecting, the 2025, for me will I work with them, what them, support, law Australian government, for upgrade them on geta. If I make him, for me, based on analysis, for look, looks, the Hamas now, cruise calls, and one of them, not demand, and me start request them to, for me, make him, he got one list of prioritizations, law calls here, will stop come. In 2023, you may to receive him about 396 yachts, where he come, Lo Vanuatu, that ranges from small yachts, with them super large yachts, where he stop come, Lo Vanuatu. Then, me will I develop them to, one yachting strategy, how me, me say, we attract them more yachts, he come, Lo Vanuatu, that you compare them, with the Fiji, Mo Tonga. Vanuatu, and me start, law third positions, or at least second tide, stay in same positions, with them Tonga. That means, the potential, for me, block, grow them sector ya, especially, for me, attract them, we call, law remote islands, and me far greater. So, me will I want them, make them more work, for 2025, or 2026, and onward, but looks, he got more yachts, and me come, law remote islands. And while still preserve them too, some large cruise ships, more cruise expeditions, for me come, all traditional ports of call, for me, were historically, historically, have night drive, and volume become law country. Thank you.
Thank you Director, belong to the scene, law respond, let me give him a table, honorable member, law Malakula.
Thank you Chairman, good morning Louis, good morning Lawrence. Chairman, I think, question lot this morning, why do me stop law, sector, law tourism, but me, want them continue, what them, one question, we stop. I think, first of all, before me talk, talk, me too, me want them, tell them, thank you, you will ever, all directors, we will establish, law, good to the work, you will establish, make them. And before me, me go at it, go, want them tell them, say, insert law, law, law Romeo, me offer, I mean, pull the same, get no more. Okay, question we stop, I think, want them, show them, what's the way, ego. Law, 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 last year, at the, me, me, you me got them, earthquake, law, 17 December. Why now, you, you may not have it, them all plant, for look, for you me, you, you me promote them, all the law, port of call, for you me, where, or you'll establish, law islands. Why me ask him question, now, Mr. Chairman, from, me look, as if, me focus no more, same, but law respect, law, MP, for me, law, ever they, we stop, was him. You me, you me keep put the focus, me, me no more, law Santo, what them, Efate, Villa, law, law, site, law tourism, especially, law, site, law cruise ship. And me, me understand, you me got, all the law, port of call, too, will establish, and one of them, too, me no, me no Villa, most Santo no more. And me, all the law islands, me do, and me, me offer, and me establish, please, I, me say, me got all beautiful sites, we stop, you me got all custom, or culture, for me, we stop, for me promote them yet. And me understand, you me got all office, for me, too, law, law islands, law province, for me. And me are, I'm director, T T, so, to what this, and to relation. One of them, now, me make them, say, you may not have it, have it, them, and me, me cut one, please, and dig up, you me, have it, them, all plant, law cruise ship, or, one of them, call, all the law islands, again, thank you.
Thank you, honorable member, let me give him long Tichi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, by me, ask him, director, law tourism, play respond, no question, where he come out, honorable member, thank you.
Thank you Chair, but then, thank you member, law, ask him question, yeah, I think, I mean, one question, if full up, only, business, I expect them to, say, for you me, Lulus, he got diversions of calls, equal alternative ports of call, Lo Vanuatu, especially, Lo Santo. Full up calls after the earthquake here, they been diverted, equal on mystery island, only because, most, all cruise lines, where they come, law itself, from an operation and cost effective options. Only finance, it law, only say, make them no more call, equal, Mr. Alan, and go back now, and me, one commercial decisions, where he been take him. That me come, law, you me, law department, law tourism, me will I, been encourage them, all cut a plan there, law, at least, we saw, he say, divert them calls, and me call, Santo. So, during, after the earthquake, we've only had about two calls, we've been diverted, law Santo, for the purpose, with, I mean, no say, come, law Port Villa. Last year, too, that we've been got, all events, New Caledonia, we've had about three to four calls, we've been diverted, equal, Santo. Santo, me got more potentials, law, in terms of products, too, for me, say, we support them, additional cruise ships, and me go on the With them plan, yeah, me will I been discussing, with the Ministry of Infrastructure, with them Prime Minister's Office, but look, law some incentives, on how we can encourage more cruise ships. For me, spread across, law, law, you me, everyone, law, three of the main ones, how will he say, accommodate them, the larger cruise ships. That me, tell them, all larger cruise ships, and me all cut a, where he, where, or he, length, law cut a, and me over 300 meters, length. So, I think, part, law blessing, that, I'm, after the earthquake, you may not been got alternative, for where now, he say, we call them, law site, law Port Villa. He cut some discussions, he happen, with the Ministry of Infrastructure and Public Utilities, for look, say, at one stage, you may want them consider them, and me call, Avana. But then, me no go, law end, you me, law department, law tourism, you may been advocate them, for look, he cut some solutions, and me propose. Then, you think, at the moment, the Ministry of Infrastructure, I miss that, make him some scoping studies, and me call, for look, for see, he got one alternative ports of call. And me open, on our side, law area, Lo Malapoa, ego, Lo Konaya, given that, cruise ship, for you me, and me no say, come, law main wharf. Based, the early assessment, where all Japanese expert, for me, give him, me look, him, same, same, main wharf, for me, by me, out of service, for quite some times, by me, no say, accommodate them, or large cruise ships. So, that means, that me will I been come up with them options, and I, for creating one temporary tender, about solutions, for Sifran. And so far, since the number eight August, you may to receive him almost four calls, finish, and me come. Where me generate them traffic, and me come back, law Port Villa, for say, we help them, on the operators, for you me. That way, you look, look, law, spending tube, law cruise ships, where me come, you will I stop, for them, say, me increase, more, and me go on the But still, you need, like, cut more products, and me available, law, encourage them, all cut a ego. One, law many issues, will cut a, to, highlight them now, me experience, where he cut on ground. If I been discussing, planned it too, me, law site, for fixing back old roads. One, me road conditions, for you me, me number two, me traffic management, for you me. That me took by traffic, and me not just, law Port Villa C B D, but they are greater, Port Villa two, for allow them, say, cut more, demand, and me say, we call, areas outside, Law Efate, for he cut traffic here, movement here, and me go, cut some, law, geta. Law site, law, go back, law outer islands, me will I, put more emphasis, and me call, on cruise expeditions, with them, all yachts. Also, we mentioned in plan there, full up, law outer islands, for me, me no cut appropriate infrastructure, for say, we support them, or large cruise ships. And that you me talk about, law cruise ships, and me come, with them, or environmental aspects, for him, too, he make him, say, me will I, privilege, and plan there, on exclusive expeditions, now, and me call, law, all outer islands. Epi, so far, Lo Shefa, have me, come back, one cruise ship, he come back, since the early this year. You may try, law pushumosa, me call, Penama, what them, Malampa, and then, Torbas, and last port of call, before the, how it move, go back, law North America. Think, by me, put more same this time, but me, allow them, suppose, other, cut question.
Thank you Director, belong to the scene, law, so we respond, law question raised. You give him time, honorable member, law Santo Royal.
Good, thank you Chair, me, ask him, law, say, no more. So, as me are them correctly, why you me, you me must have it, them, all cruise ships, for you me, or, or you cut, all the mystery land, from He more profitable, only make him, he more close up, law cost, law cut a, something, what's him, suppose, me are him, right, or me wrong. Suppose he true, something, he mean him say Suppose he move up, further north Only no make money, only no make profit, that's why, by the no one, them come and up, or you may no cut enough, tourist attraction, law, far north. You make him say, only no say, come, law, make one lose, law traveling, law cut a, law come and up. Suppose me are him, how me are him, maybe me are him, wrong, because me are him, right, and question, for me, ego, back, law on the, law north. Next one, too, declare interest, for me, for Santo, and particularly, the south, cold ice, stop conaw. Tourism Department, for you me, he got some plans. Law, make him some tourist attraction, so something, law south, help him, all man south, law prepare, after them cold a go, he may say, we pull them tourist, ego. You me expand them tourist, whatever program, for you me, the Santo. Thank you to mass.
Thank you, honorable member, you give him long Tichi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, by me, ask him, director, back, and play, go specific, law question, honorable member, raise him, and maybe, all reasons why, all cruise ships, you know, say, go on the, law north, or somebody, could he explain to me clear? Thank you.
Thank you, I think, law question, law ask him, suppose, we no profit, no profitable, law go on the I think, I mean, first, we must indicate them, say, you say, me, law government, you me say, we encourage them, or provide them, no more facility, law cruise ships, and me come, and law there, me want commercial decisions, where he cut a, he take them. So, me will I try, law, what plan there, what them, all cut a, for look, say
Looks, when they know, you know, help them all get up. Like I'm going up. And we also take them into account, planning. They have them one ship. We call it one report of call. They had cost plan. So they're very cost sensitive since post reopening of the borders. They became very cost sensitive operations. Most of all, cruise ships where we come to Port Villa or Vanuatu, we got one set itinerary, which is about eight days. Suppose you like Australia, come, Sydney, for instance. And you put in one additional, suppose you make one diversion. You go to San to that's putting an additional three days. I think some reasons, you've been hearing before finish, you've been explaining. And I think some cruise lines still try to come out. The media will explain the rationale behind decisions. Why now, sometimes he hard work, block at a, block, go to San Fernando. But they're working very hard to try to open up more calls to go to Santo. Alternative, you can Brisbane Terminal, Cruise Terminal, where we just reopened recently. By me, also, I allow him, say, we got more cruise ships have departed Brisbane, whereby we go straight to Luganville. When we want shorter distance time, you like Sydney, block, come and up. For Vanuatu. So these are our work in progress. Where you like continue, make them look at them, look at them. Encourage them to go and up or not. The side, the second question, say me about the South Santo Road. More opportunities for tourism. I think yes, I've been making some scoping. You go and up to, looks, what I'm not potential tourism product. We must have a helper more. You took out one office, Luganville, where we have a helper tool, operator, where you need him help. The side tourism product support. What immigration team, I mean, I love, looks, how now, if I have a helper, if I want to set up, set up the business, tourism, the Santo. I took out also township, many township now in the bar, where we come and up. Also, we've been mentioning them yesterday. You mean, the tourism, we've been put in one plan. You go forward, the government, let me consider them on how to turn the township. We got a lot of emphasis to the side tourism. And the side, like, tourism, let me bring him one, he bring him one different experience. He come, you mean, time of tourist only come. When I'm now, he's have expected in Los Santos, something that is different from other destinations where he got the Pacific. So we, we like, hopefully, we like continue what they want to, the local government, the Sanma, but looks, how now, he must support them more products. But I think also I'm saying, we go tourism, we business, you mean, everyone. I mean, not depend on the department of tourism. If I also work planned with the department of industry, department of environment, department of for sure development, and other departments where the enabler, let me make sure the tourism, we must have a commander. Let me help them grow the sector here. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Lo, respond. No question raised. Honorable member, please.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Dichi, with the directors and managers. Thank you, Lord. Question for me, simple, how you hear them, Director, the tourism. We talked, behind them, structure, structure, more, you, you, human resource, you know, trades and commerce. From you, like, you look, report, you got them too. You got planned the staff, so they start law. Acting. And you got any reason from how Director talked, even to him, he didn't plan the staff yet. So when I'm now, you got one structure, several structures. I come before the table, but you say, look, look, look. And you say, we give more reasons why you still got planned the staff. They start all acting position, the book, follow the book. We, you can say, we love the table. And as to how, you must have a remedy. To help them all work, please, towards nation, please. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable member. You may give him long, Dichi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, no question, honorable member. Process for recruitment, the public service commission. Also, we must have, me employer on positions only vacant or appointments only recommended. Process for actual appointments only become permanent. The me one process where he take him time or recommendations. He conduct the commission itself, we make him appointments proper. And Mr. Chairman, honorable member, I may, me one issue where me too, me been raising, short time when he got down. And response, we come back all times. He stopped before the commission, he deal with them. But we want them respond to, tell them also say, by, I was in question, query, comment, remember I come, by me, I provide them response, why and positions only stop. Also, more update, the Public Service Commission, the positions where you may, you may follow my book. Get a law, or they must become permanent. We got stability, more commitment, karma, responsibility. Thank you. We hope, say, me satisfactory Chairman, sir.
Thank you, Dichi, lo, respond. Let me give him time, again, honorable member, please.
You mean, the tourism, we speak, we want them come, cooperative. He got one practice, Mr. Colaylan, Mr. Luke, all mama. And we just, you must have, you know. He got all lending, all lending, all mama association. Lo, me, me, tell them, we declare interest for me to from. Oh, that I know, we swim, how all you manage them. Oh, that, the village. And the pleasure, I'm one of them, say, you me cooperative. You make up, sorry, more mama, yeah. Oh, that, I manage them all, all money, block at that. I mean, say, how all you call them, oh, that. He got all those small group, each village. But the thing is that once all money, or the pleasure now, we, if any, from. Once, all he got, carry more money. All he make them all savings, all he make them all lending, all savings, all lending, all savings. But all money, he never come back inside the system where the banking system, you mean. How now, you me cooperative, you me coin check. For try and capture them, make them say, all money from last time. He got one question, we may resume time. He been got, especially now, all price, block, I want up. Sometimes, N B V, he carry money. Sometimes, he got all selling money, where he say, carry, cause him. But time, all money, you know, more come out. Me ask him question, when funny answer, we make a comeback. And me, but from all money, where you call the Pentagon, she no more come out. So how now, you me, the cooperative, you may try and coin check the system. But, make them, sure, mama, yeah, you coin check the transaction, the bank. From all money, he never come out, the village. Once, he did, make them all money, or the seven, or the lend them out. But he still, he's in the village, he never coin check the banking system. So, suppose you make that one something, at least, make them say, N B V, instead, we put six million, one branch. But he claim, he has him twelve million, make them say, every money, say, access them all funds. So me ask him, no, this, suppose cooperative, he say, the activity always happen, but how now, he say, deal with them. But make them say, you open up a, all system, all money, we all enter. He come back, the money, you're on good. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable member. You may give him long, Dichi.
Thank you, Chairman. I ask him, Director, the cooperatives, please respond. Question, we come out, honorable member. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, you Chairman, with the members. More thank you to the questions where we come. Yes, I think, but me, me tell them, you mean, also, me say, you work, you mean, the cooperative, and one cross cutting. Something we must have make them. You make that all cooperative, you mean, where we all retails. You make that all producer cooperative. We make that all savings and credit cooperatives. You make that electrical cooperatives. You make that transport cooperatives. You make that building cooperatives. And every something you make that. And also, you must start working, you mean, look, look, the side, the housing cooperatives. Come back, let us specific questions. Yes, you me, the cooperative, under law act, you mean. Where me just, you may just stop. Amendment lately, the year 2021. And we capture them all financial cooperatives. Also, more savings and credit. And him, him, we want something, we must have bad forget. They have planned it. The year, me let's have work with them. So, 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 so far, you make that seventy five savings and credit cooperatives throughout the country. Throughout the country. You make, you make that fifteen, lot of there. Four, the Seva. Twenty nine, the Malamba. Seven, the Penama. Sixteen, the Sanma. And four, the Torba. So you make one total, plus seventy five savings and credit everywhere on the country. And also, you must start working, you mean, all the, I mean, also, more primary cooperative, where you situated mainly on the community level. So you must start working, you know, try, block, come up, or establish some one sort of tertiary savings, maybe a national savings, where we have, we accommodate them. Oh, that seventy five year, or that seventy five year, you say, we come, also, more branches. But come back directly, the questions, the members. We will do, you face in plan, the challenge. For act, we, me, I tell them, also, me say, you must have, you should name cooperative without informing office. My office, I'm giving you one approval. And him, me, when something, when me notice in plan, especially in the Sanma province, the island, you mean, the man, when we just start visiting, we come back. And we say, it happened to, about maybe the South Santo or some places, the Malagula. And him, I do want to raise them. From full up, only N C U's, only capitalize, the situations. After, all they start call, the Royal Airies, and all they start set them up, all scheme, yeah. But after, you know, informing me, Bella. Only, only know informing me, Bella. After, you make them say, governance plan. And we want something, where we, you know, in line with them. When you were governance structure, with cooperative, under the law, the principles for cooperative. And he may, I make them say, he question, plan the, plan the challenges. And not only the islands, we happen to the Port Villa itself. From full up, the, only just, only just have working, no more, the financial services commissions, block, have them one business name. After, only, only come. But full up, the, when they start operating, you know, operating, so one cooperative, but they are using name cooperative. And under law act, he got penal display. And suppose, some, when they are using name, the cooperative, without knowledge, office, registered, the cooperative. Penal display, it's a law act. And we range from seven millions up to seventy five million. And the reasons why me, I meant, act, we put him here. But you must talk them all kind, all same here. But make sure that all savings and credit cooperative, family business, where you formalize, where, then we register. And actually, money, you want to formalize, we come through the system. And what him, here, but I tell them, also, me say, you me, the cooperative, you may also, Chairman, the Financial Inclusions Working Group, underneath the R B V. Where you must have, look, look, address them, all issues here. And all issues here, you could, you mean, everyone. And you mean, everyone, you mean, net, you mean, work together, you mean, address them. Rather than you may, like, someone, and we call it back, the community level, the community, please. And him, he start promote them some something, where in return, we have K M E. So you must, you must make sure, you protect them area. From the good, the same, only make them find reasons will be good, please, you know, the savings and credit there. So we must talk straight. And him, I mean, when something, when me notices. And Mr. Bill, you call the N C U's. Please, suppose you cost out, what the mama, plus set them up, all kind, savings and credit, more restaurant. Please, you, you notify them, all this, the cooperative. But you must have a work together, and we help them. But make sure, you must set them up, one savings and credit, whereby, where he must have the Royal Airies. But at the same time, him, we recognize, more, him, we formalize. But make them say, you must have a report them, all savings, we get them. So, I say, why you must have, tell them here, same last year, or cooperative, you mean, only, only serve forty one million plus dividends among the members. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, long cooperative, lo, respond. You may give him time, honorable member, lo, Ambrem.
Thank you, Chair. More, thank you, you mean, one, thank you, you mean, the trade, we come. Me, we want them, ask them, one question, also, the cooperative. Same, you me, the Ambrem, same, me, say, the, the area. Same, some cooperative, who, and, me, been stop, and now, yeah, all the, all the, all the, no more work. Ale, Naraku Stine, lo, me say. But you may, someone, no, but, same, all the cooperative, I'm by, all you work, again. Ale, Naraku Stine, say. Suppose you want them create them, one cooperative, same, me, look, the Ambrem, same plan, they're, all the, same, in, the Ambrem, no, same plan, they're, it's bad, again. Question, I mean, no more, say, I'm by, you me, you me, make them, someone, no, I'm by, you me, you me, carry one cooperative, call it one, one area. Same, one, I'm requirement, no, I'm by, you me, you me, same, you me, the areas, I'm by, you come through, you will, you will, I give you me, one cooperative. I think, question, I mean, I know more. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, honorable member. You mean, you mean, the Dichi.
Thank you, honorable Chairman. Thank you, the question, the honorable member. I may ask him, the director, the cooperative, they go specific, the response, the question about how you must have a revival on cooperative, so you no more function, more process, blows a very distant on new cooperative, so get a whole interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we got straight, the questions. For the past three years, always, no register, no cooperative and business development services, and we've been focused, planned the island, by me, the Ambrem. And we've been focused, planned the island, by me, the Ambrem, the revive and plant, and then cooperative, more strengthen and full up, when it start. Today, by me, start, you may, me, well, by me, you must start to talk. Man, they tell them, you will, also, me say. Obviously, I must have work now, I think, before enough this month or early next month, by you, me start open, Ambrem Cooperative Associations, which is the local of. And work, we put in, we call it, one people, work. We're playing, we revive them from, revive them, here. And not only do that, but we want them, we tell them, say, obviously, I've been also support them, Chumai Cooperative. I've been support them, Mena Cooperative. I've been support them, Lembato Cooperative. And I've been support them, Tausi Cooperative. And, same, let me, me, come straight, the money, where you may be spending, the cooperative, you mean, me, the, the, the Ambrem alone, and we exceed them fifteen millions. Fifteen millions, right, too. And today, you say, look, fruits, we get them. And me tell them, thank you, the question, so, member, I'm asking.